Good afternoon. Committee on Labor and Technology has a 3:00 PM agenda. It's Monday, March 24th, 2025. We're in conference room 224, Hawaii State Capitol. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:01 PM on March 28th in room 224. And a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. Hey, Vice Chair.
Morning, I saw the right.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there will be a one-minute testimony limit. You will hear a bell when the limit has expired. Okay? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up first, you have SCR 145, SR 117, requesting the Senate Standing Committee on Labor and Technology and the House of Representatives Standing Committee on Labor to convene a legislative working group to develop recommendations for establishing and implementing a paid family and medical leave program for the state. Okay, up first, we have the Legislative Reference Bureau. Okay, my comments. Okay, we have Department Labor Industrial Relations Director Buttai.
Good afternoon, Jerakino. Senator Moriwaki, Jeet Buttai for Department of Labor Industrial Relations. We stand on our testimony in support. We seek to partner and play a constructive role on the paid family leave. We hope that you will consider us as a resource as you chart a way forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director. Okay, up next, we have Department of Human Resources Development. Deputy.
Chair. Senator, afternoon. Department is in support of the intent of this. We do ask for a slight revision in the language to include the other jurisdictions such as Judiciary, DOE, and UH.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have the Office of Wellness and Resilience, Office of the Governor, in support, Director Tia Harkasoff. We have Councilmember Jen Kagiwata. Okay, County Council. Okay, also in support, we have Hawaii State Teachers Association.
Chair will stand in strong support.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Catholic Charis Hawaii, Berilu Larson. And support, Policy Advisory Board for Elderly Affairs, Beverly Godley. Ryan Kusumoto, Parents and Children Together, both in support. Okay, we have Hawaii State AFL-CIO, Randy Pereira. And support, Maui Chamber of Commerce, Pamela Tompap. Okay, comments. Up next, we have Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks, Nicole Wu.
Aloha, Chair, Senator Moriwaki. Thank you for hearing this resolution. You know, we've been here many times trying to get a paid family leave program up and running here in the state of Hawaii. It seems like a working group is a really good step to get us there. So we support this resolution. Getting all the stakeholders together to work on this during the interim, I think, will really help us be in a more solid place next session. So please pass this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have Gary Simon, Hawaii Family Caregiver Coalition. Okay, in support, we have Carol Phillips, Hawaii Nurses Association. Okay, in support, we have Hoopa, testifying for Christian Fern.
Good afternoon, Chair, Senator Moriwaki. Sarah Beamer for UHPA. We are in support of these resolutions. However, we do ask for an amendment to include UHPA.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence, Angelina Mercado. In support, Bronson Silva, Democrat Party of Hawaii, Nate Hicks. Hawaii Public Health Institute, okay, both in support. And then we have Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus. In support, Imo Alliance. In support, we have ARP Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. I'm Audrey Suganakagawa from ARP Hawaii. Thank you very much for having this resolution heard by the committee. And as mentioned already by H Can Speaks, we too really appreciate the opportunity to continue the dialogue and really building up a more robust program for Hawaii. We are very honored to be serving on this working group as well. And also, if there is still room or capacity for additional member, I'd like to recommend that the American Association of University Women be included, if that's possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have United Public Workers, Kamaka Nakaimulua.
Chair, GBW stands in testimony support.
Thank you very much. Indivisible Hawaii, Amy Monk, in support. Sherm Hawaii, okay, with comments, Holmo Collaborative.
Chair Joshua is for Holmo, will stand in testimony support. Next one.
Okay, thank you very much. HEA.
Chair, Louis Sebastian, I will stand in testimony support.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Lasmin Chin, Hawaii State Commission on the Status of Women.
Chair, Senator, thank you so much for hearing these resos. We stand on our written statement and ask that the committee consider the amendments suggested and add the commission to the working group. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, committee members as well as members of the public, we received at least 20, 25 individuals, looks like all in support. Okay, we also have late testimony from the Executive Office on Aging, Director Caroline Carrera. In support, Kristy Arias, Cheryl Hall, both in support. Joel Edwards, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Senator. My name is Joel Edwards. I am running on Country Market. I'm also Chair of the Kauai Democratic Party, and I stand by my written testimony. I also just wanted to say what a wonderful opportunity to have this working group. Ironically, I am off island due to a catastrophic family event. And this is one of those instances that if one of my employees were to suffer, paid family leave would really make a significant impact. As a small business owner on Kauai, I would be proud to serve in any capacity in a working group. And I thank you for your time today. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Koi Pua Ena, Viero Villanueva, in support. Aloha, United Way, Michelle Bartel.
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Judith Armstrong, Saipeng Tomchak, Gini Ota, Nancy Rusted. Okay, all in support. Annette Takeo Mente, Michaeloi Jr., Pride at Work Hawaii, all in support. Erin Viero Villanueva, and Deanna Espinias, all in support. Any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, any questions? I have questions for Department of Labor. Thank you, Director. Okay, I know in your testimony, you had mentioned numerous studies being done. And specifically, how many previous studies do you know of?
There's been two studies. It was called the Women's Studies, and the other one was the LRB. And the problem with those studies is that they didn't consult with DLIR. I mean, I don't know how you can, you know, make conclusions that, you know, to, where you don't even ask the people that have to make it work. And they didn't, some of the data that they used were outdated.
And also, under previous bills that were being considered by the legislature, there was a number of positions and operational funding that was requested. How did you guys determine the number of positions and funding needed for the department to stand up a program and to operate?
Let me ask our Administrator, Chair. Yeah, we estimated about 122, and, you know, we're looking at about 15 million, including on the branch.
Good afternoon, Chair and Representative, or Senator, sorry, Moriwaki. Joanne Videnhart, Administrator. We came up with the staff count based on looking at unemployment insurance. Because if we compare to anything that is done in the department, paying out claims, unemployment insurance would be the closest. And unemployment insurance has 150 staff. So we looked at that and the types of positions that are there for unemployment insurance. And we did try to see what's most effective to start off the program. And so we came up with 120. And so that was based on the salary ranges that, again, would tie into those comparable positions.
So similar to UI, UI operations are, you know, typically Fed funds. So is there any Fed funds available for a family leave, a paid family leave program, such as what we're trying to consider?
No, there's not. I mean, that's one of the, you know, our big concern is that, unlike the unemployment insurance where the administration is paid by federal funds, they're just one, the general funds.
I mean, I hope, Director, that you understand the reasoning for a resolution such as this. Because I think there's a sense of frustration, there's a sense of concern. I think some of the proponents have shared very good reasons why the paid family leave program is very much needed. So I think moving forward, you know, we'd like to continue to work with you. Ultimately, it'll be a program that you would be willing to house. Not quite certain on the position count, given today's and probably the near future's fiscal outlook. But I think there's very strong need here, yeah. And just looking forward to working with you and your staff. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Senator Moriwaki.
I'm just looking at the task force composition because this is an important issue area. And I know that we have a lot of people who have interests. But just wondering, looking at some of the testimony, like, for example, from Sherm, which would have employers and employees, public and private. So are there members here, or should there be members at the table that can help us really look at how we be put together a program that would serve the interests of both public, private employees and their interests? Because I know that we've heard that AAUW wants to be a member, and it's not listed. UH and Judiciary were also added or asked to be added on or requested to be added on. And so I'm just wondering, you know, your composition and the ability to get something out in the year. We look forward to the results. But do we have all the people that you need to get information you need?
Do you have the answer? Okay, so thank you for that question, Senator. I agree that we need a well-balanced working group, if that is, if there is someone that's not on here. I think from our perspective also, there's issues that we brought up, which is the in compliance with federal, the Code of Federal Regulations. And so what we don't have, I think that may be a missing piece besides these organizations, is one with expertise on the federal law. And so when we look at the Code of Federal Regulations, I'm not sure if there is someone that we can put on a working group that would be able to have that expertise to tell us where the language that is proposed that we need to address the conflicts that we have with the federal ERISA law.
Would there be a organization, federal organization, that we could include? I guess we've got to ask them, but to include them in?
That I don't know. And that's where, that's the piece that I think is missing for the federal side of it, to be able to ensure that, I mean, if we want this to be successful, which we do, we've got to be able to get the right people at the table. And so if we get everyone together that we need, and looking at the testimony, I'm sure that adding those individuals in would be appropriate. But it's the piece that I'm still worried about, about the federal code of compliance. So there's two code of.
So with something like language, it's pretty contained now. But with something like, and a federal representative, something where it gives you some latitude to find the organization to provide that kind of perspective to the committee?
If there is someone with that expertise, the federal expertise, it's the interaction with state laws that we want to make sure that there, that is covered.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Director, Administrator, thank you. Okay, let's move on to SCR 55, SR 37. This would request D-Herd to conduct the comprehensive review of the boiler and elevator inspection branch to increase personal recruitment and retention. Up first, we have Department of Labor Industrial Relations.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Senator Moriwaki. Jeet Buttai for DLIR. We stand on our testimony in support. The more information, the more study and review out there, it can only help our elevator and boiler branch of our hyas at the end of the day. So thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Director. Okay, up next, we have D-Herd, Director Hashimoto, or Deputy.
Chair, Vice Chair, Senator Brian Ferruto, Deputy Director, D-Herd. So we are definitely in support of the intent of this resolution. We do ask for a slight amendment to put Labor in charge of the actual study itself. You know, in the past, we have partnered with Labor to do shortage differentials for this area. The reason why we're asking Labor to take the lead is we don't have, we don't understand and know the intricacies of their division like they do. They'll understand the operational aspects and the analysis that's necessary. That said, we do support the intent of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy. Okay, up next, we have National Elevator Industry, Inc., Billy Taylor, on Zoom.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hello, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Billy Taylor. I'm the Director of Government Affairs from the National Elevator Industry, or NEI. We represent those elevator manufacturers and service companies. NEI submitted a detailed written statement for the record, but I'd like to make a few key points. And there's no other way to put it, but the lack of available elevators inspectors is having a negative impact to the state's business environment. And our companies are facing significant impediments to their operations. The issue has resulted in what is now unmanageable wait times for inspections, three to four months in some cases, which is creating a growing backlog and new installation turnover, and is making modernizations increasingly difficult. For these reasons, NEI urges this committee to support SR 37 in obtaining the information needed to improve the elevator inspector inspection program. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have HGA.
Chair, I will stand in support.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe that's all the testimony we have received. Any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? Please introduce yourself for the record, yeah?
Chair, Vice Chair, Senator. My name is Darren Hamasaki. I'm the Operations Manager for Schindler Elevator, and we stand in support for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others wishing to testify? SCR 55, SR 37. Okay, all right. Okay, please introduce yourself.
Morning, Chair, Senator. Chuck Decoito, Branch Operations Manager for TK Elevator. I'm here in full support of SR 37, of moving it forward to get our industry back to where it needs to be. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Vice Chair, Senator Moriwaki.
My name is Javier Palmerink with Otis Elevator Company. And I'm here in support of this resolution. I do, I work on the construction side for the past 20 years now. And that's, this has been a challenge with developers, general contractors, and the inspection branch is a critical partner in turning over projects that we're doing on time. So anything that can be done to support that branch, we're in support of. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair. I'm Keith Armoto with Otis Elevator. I too work with Javier, and I've been in the industry for 46 years now. So I support this resolution. And I think it's really important that we move forward to finding new inspectors, not... The reason why I kind of mentioned I'm 46 years in the industry is that's what you guys normally find is retirees. So you only get a couple of years out of them, you know? So we're looking for the younger generation that, but they want to make a career out of it, you know? So I think bringing up the pay and finding the talent, the younger talent, would help the industry in the long run. So I support this Resolution 55.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Senator Moriwaki.
Michael Nagal, General Manager of Kone Elevators and Escalators. Been in the industry for 30 years. Definitely support the bill. Kone is in full support. The hardship for the companies is there, as well as for the general public to get their permits and inspection stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions?
I do.
Senator Moriwaki.
So Department of Labor, Director. Just heard from HRD that they would recommend that Labor Department be overseeing this because they have not enough information on, I guess, the elevator industry or the boiler industry. How do you feel about, the resolution now puts it in HRD? Is it HRD or DLNR, DLIR?
Well, in terms of what the, because you're talking about classifications and compensation. I mean, they're the subject matter experts on those. We're not, you know, we, and it's their decision that, I mean, I know it was brought up that, you know, the last time we, you know, we partnered on something, on, you know, on something like this. And we had an insurrection in our, you know, in our boiler section because, you know, they felt like they were being treated like second class.
So part of the problem is recruitment, but also, I guess I'm hearing that it's also getting people trained, getting younger people into the field and retirees coming back, giving us a couple of years. Is that something that, that we could work on? Is it something that, you know, the kind of training or incentives?
Well, there's a bill about to reduce the vesting period. That's, you know, it's working its way.
Or training, any kind of training program that you folks in Labor?
Well, we're looking at also doing our own apprenticeship for, you know, for the boiler and elevator because hopefully that if they, you know, they start in our department, that they will, you know, stay. But like what the previous testifier said, I mean, most of the people that we've been able to get are the, you know, the ones that are retiring from, from the industry.
So it's like, how do you get young blood into the state system and be able to progress through the system?
Well, I think compensation, you know, you start with the compensation. I mean, the, I mean, they're like the, you know, they're like the prize hog at a, you know, 4-H convention, you know, where, because they, you know, they go out in the field and they see what their, you know, their counterparts are making. I mean, we, and I think you, you know, you got to make it attractive enough because, you know, if we just, you know, if we're not even at the ballpark, I mean, if this is a horse race, I mean, we're not even, you know, we're not even at the starting gate. So I think there's got to be a way. That's why we're trying to do as much, you know, in the department to do a workaround based on, you know, when we didn't get the approval for the shortage differential by doing, you know, special projects.
I guess I do see that, that human element in this, that, you know, what is the problem? And how can we, yes, classification, compensation, but that's kind of at the end point of knowing what the problem is and where we're short. Is it short on training? Is it short on making this attractive job? Or, you know, those kinds of parts of it, I see as, as not in the bill that, or the reso that might be helpful in terms of addressing the problem and solving. But I don't know where you folks look at this reso as helping you folks get the people you need into the department.
Well, like I said, I think the more information, the more study that is done, and, you know, because it, you know, I think that it can only help the, you know, the system.
Sure. Okay, who's that? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, or Vice Chair?
Oh, no, just, I was going to say, you know, in case anyone asks, we're definitely doing our part, and maybe if a recommendation for other departments can also ensure their elevators and their buildings are constantly broken so that we ensure this next generation, a steady supply of quick work.
No, I mean, everybody, you know, rides an elevator and...
I'm just kidding. But Dag is listening, you know?
Director, I have a quick question. So you brought up a point regarding the shortage differential. My recollection is that last year, we had put in funding for that. So what, what's the latest update on that specifically?
Well, it was the, you know, it never, yeah, it was the, you know, Ways and Means gave us the, they called it the, you know, shortage differential equity. I think that's what the Chair of Ways and Means, because, you know, I don't know, because, because basically, I mean, what we're based is the, you know, you, you, you have a unit. You're treating one side, you know, the guy in one cubicle, you know, first class, whereas the next guy on the, it never, it never got implemented. So what we've been trying to do is do a, you know, a special project so that we don't need to go through the rigmarole at, you know, with D-Herd.
So the Chair is inclined to move this resolution the way it stands. You know, currently, we do understand D-Herd has a concern that they may not be the appropriate agency to be in charge of this particular resolution. However, under the, be it further resolved under one, the current organizational composition and its effectiveness in meeting its responsibilities for that specific portion, are you guys willing to work with D-Herd to help them understand?
Absolutely.
What hyas, specifically what this branch is trying to do in recruitment and retention of future staff?
Absolutely, because I think it would be a benefit for them to even go to the work sites rather than just do it, you know, in their, you know, do a test audit.
Again, to clarify, you guys are willing to work together, correct? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? Let's move on to the next resolution. Thank you, Director. SCR 64, SR 49, requesting D-Herd to establish the Hawaii State Fellows Program. Okay, up first, we have D-Herd.
Chair, Vice Chair, Senator. So we are in, in support of the intent of this resolution. We do ask, however, that resources be provided. We understand that, you know, you cannot provide resources through a resolution and ask that if, in fact, this were to happen, that the funds be put into HB 300, the budget bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see, we have anyone else? I believe that's the only testimony we received. Any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? I have a quick question for D-Herd. We understand the resources needed, and this probably won't be the avenue to seek those resources because you're asking for quite a bit, 25 temporary FTEs. those resources, because you're asking for quite a bit, twenty-five temporary FTEs for the fellows, as well as two permanent staff. How did you guys determine the position count?
So the twenty-five is arbitrary, it could be anything. That's the, you know, the number needed. How big or how small do we want the fellows program to be? Using Heli Mu as kind of a guide, they had quite a few, I don't know what the number is off the top of my head, but it's much more than the twenty-five position. So that's what those positions are needed for. And then the program itself would largely be scaled in terms of the permanent FTE. So this would be an adequate number, we believe, for the twenty-five. If we go to fifty, probably could still do it with two, but if we start talking about a hundred, a hundred fifty fellows, then obviously it would have to increase.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, Deputy. Let's move on to SCR sixty-seven, SR fifty-one. Again, requesting D-Herd to more closely cooperate with the Human Resources Development Units assigned to state agencies comprising the state's public mental health care system to determine the necessary actions to expedite hiring and filling critical vacancies, including solutions to address the obstacles and challenges unique to the, to the mental health care workforce. Okay, up first, we have D-Herd, Deputy.
Getting one workout today. So this is a good resolution, we are, again, in support of the intent. We do ask for some amendments to the current language. The first one, and basically, the intent of the amendments is to ensure that everyone is cooperating and working together. Oftentimes, when we try to do a study or we try to reach out and our information is not complete, you know, we don't necessarily get everything. And so what we're asking is that everyone participate, and that's what the amendments, the language amendments do here.
Okay, thank you, Deputy. Okay, up next, we have the Hawaii State Council on Mental Health. On Zoom.
Chair, good afternoon. Hi, Vice Chair Lee, hi, members of the committee. Aloha, my name is Catherine Almer, and I serve as the Chair of the State Council on Mental Health, or Council of Twenty-One Member Advisory Body established by Hawaii Law to advocate for individuals affected by mental illness and to advise on statewide mental health needs and resource allocation. To summarize, we strongly support SCR sixty-seven, which urges D-Herd to collaborate more closely with state agencies to address the critical shortage of mental health professionals. Hawaii is facing a severe workforce crisis. It impacts vulnerable populations, youth, older individuals, native Hawaiian communities, neighboring islands, who struggle to access timely, consistent care. Suicide remains one of the leading causes of death among youth. And one in four residents by 2030 will be sixty-five or older, which will increase the demand for integrated mental health services. By adopting SCR sixty-seven, the legislature can help modernize the hiring practices, develop targeted recruitment strategies, and ensure access to essential services. So mental health is public health, without action, workforce strategies or shortages will continue to drive higher healthcare costs. Thank you, we urge you to pass SCR sixty-seven. Mahalo for your opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. We do have late testimony from Mary Pat Waterhouse in support. Any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the last pair of resolutions on the agenda. SCR sixty-three, SR forty-eight, requesting the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations to study the establishment of a Hawaii Workforce Excellence Award. There's a French term that I won't try to say. Might disappoint or upset people, so I will not. But we have Director, DLIR.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Senator Mariwaki. We stand on our testimony in strong support. You know, many good jobs don't require a college degree. So having a Workforce Excellence Program will allow young people to learn that there are many paths to a good job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any others wishing to testify? SCR sixty-three, SR forty. Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, we're gonna recess briefly, recess. Reconvening our three PM agenda for decision-making. Okay, up first, we have SCR one forty-five, SR one seventeen, requesting that the Senate Standing Committee on Labor and Technology and the House Committee on Labor to convene a legislative working group to develop recommendations for establishing and implementing a paid family and medical leave program for the state. Chair's recommendation is to defer decision-making until Friday, March twenty-eighth, three PM, in this conference room, room two-two-four. There were a number of suggestions that I think the Chair feels need to consider before we come up with a decision. Okay? So defer decision-making to Friday, March twenty-eighth, again, three PM, in Conference Room two-two-four. Moving on to SCR fifty-five, SR thirty-seven, requesting D-Herd to conduct a comprehensive review of the Boiler and Elevator Inspection Branch to increase personnel recruitment and retention. Members, the recommendation is to move this as is. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair Fodovu.
Voting on SCR fifty-five and SR thirty-seven, the recommendation is to pass unamended. Chair Kino?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senators Ihara and Favella excused.
Senator Mariwaki?
Aye.
Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving on to SCR sixty-four, SR forty-nine, requesting D-Herd to establish the Hawaii State Fellows Program. Members, the recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Okay, moving on to the next set of resolutions. SCR sixty-seven, SR fifty-one, requesting D-Herd to more closely cooperate with Human Resources Development Units assigned to various state agencies comprising the state's public mental health care system to determine the necessary actions to expedite hiring and filling critical vacancies, including solutions to address the obstacles and challenges unique to the mental health care workforce. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate draft one. We'll be taking D-Herd's amendments, suggested amendments, page two, lines seventeen to twenty, we're gonna amend to read as follows in new language, underlined and bold, be it resolved by the Senate of the Thirty-Third Legislature of the State of Hawaii, regular session twenty-twenty-five, with the House of Representatives concurring that the, that D-Herd and the state agencies comprising the state's public mental health care system are requested to more closely cooperate, and we're gonna be striking those next two lines, and then it'll continue to read, "to determine the necessary actions to expedite hiring and filling critical vacancies, including solutions to address the obstacles and challenges unique to the mental health care workforce." And we're gonna also add on page two, line twenty-five to twenty-seven, to amend to read as new language, and we're gonna be inserting Director of Health, Superintendent of DOE, Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, as well as the judiciary, specifically the Chief Justice of the Courts. Any questions or concerns, colleagues? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Voting on SCR sixty-seven and SR fifty-one, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting excused absence of Senators Ihara and Favella. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none, the recommendations are adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. And moving on to SCR sixty-three, SR forty-eight, requesting Department of Labor Industrial Relations to study the establishment of a Hawaii Workforce Excellence Award Program. Members, the recommendation is to move this as is.
Voting on SCR sixty-three and SR forty-eight, the recommendation is to pass unamended, noting excused absence of Senators Ihara and Favella. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. This concludes our hearing. Mahalo.